What's up? We'll call the panel Select Board. Regular meeting Thursday, June 20th at 7:00, 6:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes, 6:13, 13. Warrants, mail. Old business, town auditors. Old business, bridge repair and blacktop bids. New business, Green Mountain National Forest. RE Integrated Resource Project. FY13 general road fund budget adjustments. And C Personnel Erases. Board have anything they would like to... They have a motion?
Second it.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes, 6:13, 13.
You got more chairs around here?
Second it.
I look even shorter this way.
All in favor.
Aye.
Warrants. They're way down. This one's in mail. Mail, I believe. Accounts payable, 6:21, 13 to 6... Yeah, 6:21, 13. Any amount of $17,113.37. Waste Management, one of your large ones. You got fuel, you got your electricity, which is $68.92. Dispatching to Bennington. Those are your larger items on there. Payroll, 6:13, 6:16, 13 to 6:21, 13. Any amount of $5,213.47. That's your payroll. Taking a motion on the warrants?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mail. We have a letter from Mark Freeman, Northwest Hill. Dear Board of Selectmen, it has come to my attention there is a vacancy on the Delup Development Review Board. I request to be appointed to this position. I moved here in the area in 1974 to attend North Adams State College. After graduation, I worked retail for eight years. Since 1995, I've run a small business in Williamstown, Mass. I have served on the Board of Wild Oats Food Coop for six years. Three as treasurer. Additionally, I was appointed to Williamstown Sign Commissioner, where I served seven years for as chairman. Thank you for your time and consideration to this matter. What is your feelings?
Do you think the panel will...
No, it's still...
The nerves are still opening?
I'm here if you have any questions.
Yep.
Julie, are you here?
Yes.
Is there still an opening on your board?
We have a vacancy. Well, we have an alternate who has not been attending a meeting in two years. And she was willing to put in a letter to, you know, if somebody else was interested in coming in.
Mark.
So I guess there's an opening.
I would say if they haven't done it in two years.
An alternate? Is that what you're saying?
No, an opening for a position.
An opening on the board.
I'm making a motion with the point, Mark. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. You're on, thank you. Excellent.
There'll be a quiz on next Thursday.
And a testifying, yeah, following.
Okay, Board of Selectmen. Dear Board of Selectmen, Based on our past conversations, the Planning Commission once again has recommended Nelson Brownell for zoning administration for a position. Term of position for term ending July 1st, 2016.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation.
We have a motion?
Second.
I just want to add one thing. Is there any way we can make it as an intern? So his term will expire when all the other appointments expire? Instead of appointing somebody one month and appointing somebody else the next month?
Yeah, that bothers me too, but I... The only way you'd be able to do it is to put him interim till next year.
And turn to the end of the...
That would be next March.
Right. That would be three years.
Then it would be three years from that point on. Which would...
Where all the appointments are, boom, get them done.
You know, I don't think any of us understood that this interim lapped over to the point three years ago where it did.
So what are you saying? You want to appoint him as an intern instead of bringing him on full...
To fulfill this term. So then all the appointments will be back on schedule? What does that equal in January?
Usually we try to, after the boards organize in March, we try to by April do all the appointments.
He's already interim, why would you...
Yeah, that's what I don't know. He's already interim, so I, you know, I'm gonna stick with my motion. We take the recommendation of the Planning Board to appoint him as zoning administrator. I'll second it.
You think Ronnie did?
I seconded it already.
It was a conversation just that Mike brought up.
Yeah, we were just having a little chat, chit-chat there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we have two, all opposed. We have to have a vote opposed.
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 So it's three to two, correct?
Yes. If you vote, okay, all right, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, Dale.
What did you guess what?
To appoint Nelson.
Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, Dale.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't either, I'm sorry.
Okay, Nelson has been appointed. Okay, Board of Selectmen, from Karen, our town clerk. Our new animal control officer brought a dog that had been loose for several days to Great Fields Kennel. The owner was located and proceeded to the kennel to claim his dog and pay the kennel fees. My advice to the kennel and our ACO was to any dog released to an owner should obtain dog licenses before they are being released. In the event that the dog had not received its rabies shot, it's our ACOs will make an appointment with West Mountain Animal Hospital and bring the dog for appropriate shots and the owner will pay West Mountain. At that time, the owner can then license their dog. In this case, however, the dog was five months of age and apparently from St. Albans area. The statute requires the dog must be six months older and therefore didn't really... Didn't fall into this category. But it was released to the owner, but she's bringing up the fact that our animal control officer needs to be aware if the dog is not licensed and has shots.
I go along with that as far as, but I can't see demanding where they take it. Well, I don't understand that. I mean, that to me, you take it to your vet of your choice. Doesn't matter who it is, I don't care.
Well, it's the ACO doing it. It's our animal control officer that has control of the dog.
Oh, she wants it, so we're gonna... That's our vet?
Yeah, that's the one who set up Green Mountain.
Now, I'm sure if the people are there, there's an exception to that rule.
They're gonna take the dog. Well, see, it isn't quite clear to me if the dog was, wasn't, didn't have a shot, say, and then, so we're gonna go ahead and get it the shot rather than just have the owner get it vaccinated and licensed? That's the only thing I'm asking. I mean, I would think that, of course, that was a puppy, so it was younger than what needed to be. But I don't know what I did in my favor, I may be all wet.
I would assume, being that we're...
He's quite confusing already.
Being that we're putting this animal in a shelter. People and other animals around it, it's not clear if it's had its shots or whatever.
I think Karen as the town clerk determines licensing requirements more than the board does.
No, but that's what I'm saying, and we have control of the animal and that's where that statue would fall in.
And then we just bill the customer back?
Yes.
If they come after it, that's correct?
No, I think they're supposed to pay the vet directly.
Okay.
I think when they go to pick it up.
That's what she said. Pay the vet directly so that we're not handling money.
The problem is the owner will pay West Mountain.
Okay.
At the time, the owner can then license their dog. Okay. I'm sure that our ACO has a copy of this letter, if not, okay. Close our mail. Okay. Town auditors.
Okay, you've all got correspondence from us, I hope, that are in the mail box. The first letter just merely states that, you know, for the past few weeks, we've been voicing our concerns about a few things and the Select Board has not acknowledged that you've received our letters at your meetings. Whether you choose to discuss them in open session or not isn't an issue, but you could at least say, "We did receive something from the town auditors that we need to discuss" or whatever. I just thought that if you did get these letters, we would appreciate you acknowledging them. If you didn't, I can certainly get you copies.
We received some letters. I don't know exactly which ones you have in mind.
Well, there should have been one... There should have been at least one letter every single week since the last time we met. And we had not... There was one week that you went into executive session to discuss the bereavement pay, so I'm guessing that you got that one.
Some we have acted on, some were redundant in the way that they'd been answered before, so we made no action on them.
Not even to acknowledge that you got them in your mail?
Because we had done them before.
Okay. Moving on. Wait, there's a couple of letters in here concerning the questions that we had asked at the last meeting. The original question on May 16th was, "Who gets health insurance? What percentage of the premium does the employee pay? What percent does the employer pay? And why do some who refuse health insurance get a stipend when others do not? Your answer to us was, 'See the attached Blue Cross Blue Shield invoice.' I put a copy of the invoice in there and nowhere on there is there a mention of any kind of a percent, other than what I've tried to calculate from the numbers that show on the invoice, which I had before anyway. There's also no... On the insurance bill, there's no definition of the qualification to participate in the town's health insurance. And, you know, I'd like to know what these qualifications are and where they can be found. And, you know, what does the personnel policy say about insurance? Can anyone participate?
I have a question. Where does that come into an auditor's play?
Oh, it's called compliance.
But being that we make this and it is all different on each individual employee...
But it shouldn't be different on each individual employee and there are no individual contracts.
But the Select Board makes those decisions, not the auditors.
I'm not making a decision.
You're asking us why we're making the decision.
I'm not asking you why. I'm asking you what your decision is. Did you decide at some point at a meeting to charge a person, a single plan, 33.9%? That they would pay 33.9% and we would pay 66.1% of the insurance premium?
Well, I don't remember the date, but it would depend, it had to come up from somewhere.
That's what I'm trying to find out. I'd like to know where.
There's individuals here, since I've been on the board, that have applied for various reasons for either raise or insurance benefits. And it was brought before the board and we opted to go one way or the other with it.
And I don't have an issue with the board deciding all this, Steve. My issue is...
But these are all different.
That's right. They're all different. All of the percentages that the people are paying are all different.
Right, because of the time they work, because of positions they're in. It's like the hourly pay, it's not all the same for everybody.
That's what I was gonna ask, is if one person is making $9 an hour and one person is making $19 an hour, is... Does that figure into a different rate of pay? Or, I'm asking this question, I don't know the answer.
This has nothing to do with an hourly rate.
Okay.
This is a withholding. You've had a job, I'm sure. Did you ever have a job where you got insurance? Normally, your employer will say, "Okay, we're gonna pay 50%, you're gonna pay 50%." So 50% is withheld from your check of the amount of the monthly premium.
Right, and if I'm making...
And then I would pay 50% as the employer.
And wage has nothing to do with this?
No.
It's so important to find this information out because like we attended a conference yesterday on this affordable healthcare. Everything's gonna be changing here. Dramatic changes coming as of October 1st and January 1 of 2014. And the Select Board and the employees, particularly the employees, are gonna be very, very much involved in this. We're trying to get a handle on it for us, not to understand where the policy has come from and when it... You know, you're gonna have to look at this very carefully.
Well, see, right now, Ray, just like you said, not... Because I've looked at that too. And right now, from what I understand, I think that there's gonna be a whole... We're gonna be open a Pandora's box with this because nothing has been finalized. They're still making pro... They're still making plans, this is going on. And so consequently, I think after 2014 or when this new health plan goes through, all this is gonna be moot point at that point because everything's gotta change.
Right, the percentage is...
And we don't know what is gonna happen.
The percentages all have to be the same.
The percentages are...
Well, that's fine, but I mean, that's it now. I think it's a moot point because when this goes through, everything is gonna change. So I think rather than to go forward with this and keep making changes when everything's gonna change eventually anyway is...
No one's looking to make any changes at all. We're just looking to see where the policy came from that would dictate how this arrangement came about and, you know, for what... Whether it was set on salary, which probably it shouldn't have been, but how the arrangement was made. It was made individually, personnel-wise, in executive session, or how it was. That's what we're looking for, is the policy.
It could, but I don't know, they could have been... The decision could have been made 10 years ago, I don't know.
But it should be written... If it's a decision that is applied to all of your employees, then it should be written somewhere. Somewhere, there should be a piece of paper that says...
Oh, I agree with you, it should be.
You're gonna pay 40% of your premium, we're gonna pay 60.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to table this till we find out some answers here because we're not gonna go around the table on this thing. Obviously, I don't have the answer.
We don't.
So I'm gonna make a motion to table this until we have further information.
I'm gonna second it.
Okay, motion and second.
What are you tabling?
To find out about the Blue Cross Blue Shield policy and to look into it so we can all see it and find out what exactly it is.
It's not the Blue Cross Blue Shield policy I'm questioning.
It's the payment of it.
It's the percentage that the employees pay.
Right, and I don't, you know, I... I'm not gonna make a decision here. This is a lot of information to go through and...
A question, I think some of this maybe could be, I'm off the wall here, but some of these people have just for themselves.
Yes.
Right, there's different.
There are different plans, yeah.
And some of them have family plans, so therefore their premium would be different.
Their premiums are different, yes.
That part, I mean...
That part's understandable.
I know that we did give insurance to a couple of people and it was just for them, not family.
Right.
And we've done several different policies and little raises in different positions throughout the years.
But they still have to be documented, Steve.
And I'm sure that they were because we have to go through an insurance policy every year.
And I would request that. Could you copy us those documents, Linda?
Copy what?
The documents that state what percentage the employee's paying. If every... If all these agreements are different, then...
I don't have any documents to copy for you.
You have no documents saying there's anything different about the employee?
I have no documents to...
The only thing you would have would be minutes of a meeting when we voted on certain personnel to get certain things for insurance, when they were requested or raised or whatever.
Yeah, I believe I have a motion.
I'm gonna second it. I'm gonna go there, dash this out and let's all send them, we're still gonna have the same answer.
Okay, motion and second on the floor, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, the other part of that was with the Affordable Care Act coming up. I don't... I'm not sure if any of you have done any research on it. Dale, you seem to have a little bit of knowledge on it.
Well, I know that the only research I've got was I had a slip come in from an insurance person and...
Well, by October 1st, the municipality needs to fill out something on the computer, the paperwork to be an employer. You guys have got to decide what it is that you're going to get from your employees. If you do nothing, which may be the way to go, no one will have insurance January 1st. No one. So I think somebody should be taking a look at something.
I tend to highly believe that you've got insurance.
Where does our insurance... We go through this in July, if I'm not mistaken?
The health insurance is January, it runs out in January.
Right, or other policies and...
Yep, all the other ones are July. I did copy this for you. We went to a conference yesterday and there was a two-hour seminar on the insurance and that's a checklist that, you know, you just... For your own benefit, I would recommend that you guys take a look at it and figure out what it is you're going to do. And maybe a specific dollar amount rather than a percentage might be the way to go because there's a bunch of different policies that the Vermont Health Connect is going to be offering. And the employees pick the policy, not the employer, so...
And the dates were pretty much set in stone. They informed us yesterday, there is no Plan B. The webpage is gonna be coming up for Vermont Healthcare this month, July. Employees have till October 1st of this year to get into the webpage and then make a decision by November and then it'll take effect after January 1. There's a whole slew of criteria for the employees. It's much more employee, individual, so it's very important. And then one of the things that's overriding this whole thing is that right now, I believe we have nine, nine people that are on the insurance. They told us that 30 hours is the cutoff point. So there could be some people that are borderline. The board would have to make a decision how they're gonna handle part-time people. They're not gonna be counted in this situation. So there's a lot of... It's a lot of work ahead for you guys and there's a lot of work ahead for the employees and decisions to be made. So it's very, very important to get involved in it as soon as possible.
The other question was, "Is the day after Thanksgiving a new paid holiday?" The answer that you gave me was no. Are we going to recoup the holiday pay that was given to the town employees for this day that was paid in November? Which is a matter of putting in a negative holiday and charging them either a sick day or a vacation day before the end of the year.
Were we on a snow day, what does this pertain to?
I researched that, no monies are to be recouped.
Linda, you paid holiday pay.
Steve has documentation.
Could I see it?
We could provide it to her at a later time.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Okay. So the next question is, "The $20,000 administrative charge in the road fund." The answer is, "The road fund reimburses the general fund for administrative services provided by the administrative assistant." Our response to this is, "During fiscal year 2012," and the same thing is going on fiscal year 2013, except the numbers change, "the general fund expended $31,080 for the administrative assistant. The road fund expended $20,000 and the wastewater's fund expended $1,200. This totals $52,280. Payroll records indicate that the administrative assistant was paid $31,080. So we ask, where did the other $21,200 go?"
I'm trying to read between the lines on this.
There's nothing to read between the lines. If I say something, it's said and we're... It's said, it's right there.
Well, I happen to know what Linda gets paid because we put that together as our figures. And I happen to know that $20,000 comes out of the road fund for that.
Well, if that's the case, then there should only be $11,000 budgeted in the general fund for that.
$20,000 comes out of the road fund. $1,200 comes out of the wastewater.
Right.
The rest of the payment to make up, her $31,080, comes out of the general.
That may be true, Steve, but you've budgeted in the general fund $31,000 and you've expended it. You've budgeted $20,000 and you've expended it and you've budgeted $1,200 and you've expended it.
Well, I'm not sure how that works.
So somewhere, there's $20,000 that is slushing around somewhere, pardon the expression. I don't think you do, Linda. That's not the point of this conversation at all because it would show in your payroll if you did. You know, your payroll would be that much. So, I mean, in cross-checking the accounts payable with the payroll records, you know...
We will check this figure to see where that came up with. Because obviously, there's an error there somewhere.
Well, I'd just like to know where it went. I'd like to know where it is.
We don't have that answer for you right here, right now.
I don't believe it went anywhere. I believe it's, if there is such a thing as an error.
The problem is, if you want my opinion, is we have a lot of money that's moved around. There's money that's put in and we don't spend it, but it gets spent.
Right.
And there's money that... Some things are under-budgeted, but they get paid.
Which we're gonna be doing tonight.
I've always hollered about that. Because if we're gonna spend so much money, why isn't it in there so that people know when they look at the town report, it should be there?
Absolutely right.
That's it, that's it.
Well, that's why the auditors, yeah.
It seems to be over-budgeted about $22,000.
That's why the auditors tell you to move your money around at the end of the year to cover your expenses, like you are doing with the road. I mean, you said you were going to move some money with the road to cover... So you've got money here and you need it there and that's fine. You know, I don't have... We don't have a problem doing that. The problem is when it's moved somewhere and you can't find it, that's the issue. I have no doubt that it's here somewhere. I would just like to know what it's applied for and why it's necessary to budget $20,000 in the road budget for an administrative anything. Casey runs the road.
Casey doesn't pay the bills or do the payroll or all the...
But Linda, that's all part of the general budget. That is all...
It's how they share.
It's like the school...
That's how they share, Betty.
And that's part of the management, which is not auditor again. I'm sorry, that does not fall into an auditor's category on how we...
I'm not trying to manage, yes.
Well, it sure does sound like it.
Well, okay, then you...
Right from the point.
I think that you need to speak to someone from the state that may explain to you what compliance is.
Well, has what we do and have been doing for many years this way has seemed to work pretty fine. We do run into some errors and if there's money that has been slid into an account or put into a line where it shouldn't be, where there has before, we will find it and correct it. But as far as managing how the road budget has operated for years in paying our administrator and how the line comes out of that, when we completed a wastewater system that also contributed to that, we don't need a whole bunch of people managing this. If we're gonna do that, we need a town manager and we can find something else to do.
That's not our intention. Our intention is that we're looking at figures and we'd like to get these figures going up, we'd like to ask it in a correct way, in a proper way, which we're trying to do answers for.
And then you wanna know why they're paid through a certain way.
That's right.
That's right.
That has nothing to do with figures adding up as how they're paid.
No, it doesn't have to absolutely be everything to do with it.
I don't believe it does, I disagree with you. We'll move on.
No, I just had just a couple more questions. We have noticed that in the last, I think it's three, four payroll warrants, the check stops for the employees are no longer there. That information is vital for us to verify the time cards, accrue... That information is vital for us to verify the time cards, accrued leave, to see that the people are getting paid, the annual leave or sick, holiday pay. And we're wondering why all of a sudden after years, it's, this practice has stopped.
Okay. To my understanding, there was some questions about legalities and funds that go from payroll to savings or whatever. Not understanding this totally, I've asked for some legal opinion. I believe we will have that very quickly and I believe it'll actually explain this out, whether we're right or wrong with this factor.
Terrific, good.
And we should have the answer probably, I'm guessing, within a week.
Okay, if you share that with us, we'd most appreciate it.
We will.
Uh, the only thing I would venture and you're well aware of it, the registry has all the deductions of the employees. So, we're already seeing the deductions. What we're not seeing is the accrue, the anniversary, whether coming on with the annual or actually the annual vacation pay.
And I'm not familiar with the legal status of this. I actually, being it is public record, that anybody actually from the town can come in here and look at it. I don't believe, after certain conversations I've had, that there actually is a problem. But I want to make sure and that's a legal aspect.
We would appreciate them being returned. You have returned the ones to the accounts payable. Final question we have, and we're having trouble getting into the computer. It seems to be that we cannot get in. We'd like the permission for a couple things. We'd like to be able to contact the computer outfit or have you contact the computer outfit and give us why we cannot in, get in and get our reports out of there. And the other thing is that when the outside orders come in, we'd like to meet with the outside orders.
I don't know if that's a good idea.
Well, it's, in past practice, it's already happened.
Well, I would, where I would put that, now I gave you my opinion, I don't think it's a good idea. What I would do is certainly ask the Bonadillo group their opinion.
I appreciate that.
And that's where I would fall on that. I would not make the, the assumption myself on it. I want their feeling on how that is handled.
The reason I, I say this is when they first came in, they requested from Mr. Hutchison, the order at that time, a statement. He gave them a statement and I'd like to give them, or the board, our orders board will also like to give them a statement. It's important that they know what we know.
And it's also important that they are the tail end of a multimillion-dollar sewer project and that's why they are on as our auditors. That we have to have them to do this because of the federal money that was granted to us to do the project that we have just finished.
So, they're only auditing the grant?
No, they're auditing our monies because we've received monies from the feds and this is why we have to have a professional audit firm. The question can be asked for them, if they have no problem with it, then I have no problem with them. I don't believe this board does.
How about the computers, Steve?
The computer, I have nothing to do with computers, know nothing about it, so.
What do you mean, you can't access?
We're trying, we're getting into areas where we really don't belong and we don't want to go any further. The computer's telling Betty that, you know, that you're in an area you don't really get into. We'd like to get the computer company down here or over the phone, however they want to do it, and enlighten us on how to get in there and get our reports. They're going to be vital to us as far as the town report and, uh, you know, we'd like to, we've had trouble now, the last three weeks, we've been trying to do it. We've had to get Ellen to do it for us. She can go into a restricted area, yes. Join the crowd, so it's.
You have an issue with this too?
It's a very slow process and it's, you know, we're not calling that many reports off, but we do need some reports and to verify different things.
I had one question.
Isn't this nice, huh?
Oh, this is lovely. I'm looking, I couldn't find the letter, but somewhere in there you were commenting on late, our late policy on employees.
Tardiness.
Tardiness. And I, I buzzed through this and now I'm not going to find the page because I'm looking for it.
I might say that since it's been mentioned, it's gotten a lot better.
I was going to say, I really sincerely.
The current payroll, like within the past four weeks has been, uh, within minutes.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at, a minute, seven minutes, three minutes. I was, I was really hoping you weren't finding a lot of fault with that because I didn't find it as a road crew having a minute or two.
When I brought that up, there was one person that was consistently late every single day, so.
Okay, but really, um, I have a really hard time with stretching that into the scope of an auditor. That's why we have road foremans, that's why we have a select board, um.
So, an auditor, what's an auditor supposed to do according to?
Well, he's not supposed to worry about if somebody's punching in on time. I think that is.
Seriously, Rich?
Yes, seriously, okay? Uh, because if I punch in a mon, a minute late at work or if I'm two minutes late at work, okay.
You don't think the payroll clerk looks at that? You don't think that when they have an audit at the company, that they don't look at that?
If I could finish, uh, if you do punch in late, it's usually up to your superior to take care of that and I really don't think auditors fall into that category, um.
We didn't take care of it, all we did was report it.
I know, but to, you know, if there's a habitual problem, I'm sure that the foremans and the people in charge will let us know. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we all stop.
You keep us posted and advise us on those other situations legal and.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to back.
The board would like, can we slide down Bridge and Blacktop Repairs? I would like to, we have Green Mountain National Forest in here and stuff and.
Slide down to them and quite past the bridge.
Let's not keep these folks waiting for this exciting stuff going on here today.
Green Mountain National Forest. Let's bring you up before we get into the midnight hours.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Sounds good, yeah, thanks for receiving us and having us on your agenda tonight. My name is Bill Jackson and I'm, I work up in Manchester. I'm the district ranger for the Manchester Ranger District, which encompasses essentially from the Massachusetts border all the way up, just past Wallingford. So, um, I've been in place as a district ranger there for about a year now, uh, on Manchester Ranger District and we're here to present a new project that is taking shape that is known as a South of Route 9 Integrated Resource Project. And before I move further, I want to introduce Melissa Reckert, she's our forest planner, and Jeff Tilly is our forest management staff for the forest right now.
Thank you.
So, integrated resource projects, or otherwise known as IRPs, are one of the ways that we get our projects done in a, in a wholesale fashion. Like, like the town, we have a plan, which is known as a forest plan. And the forest plan, uh, is our, there you go.
Yep.
Outlines.
Show the camera.
Land and Resource Management Plan from 2006. Our Land and Resource Management Plan, otherwise known as our forest plan, outlines our vision, you know, our desired future conditions that we want to move towards. And to get there, we, we involve what's known as integrated resource projects to achieve some of those desired future conditions. And, and it runs a gamut in the forest plan from timber production, from quality wildlife habitat, quality watersheds, providing recreation opportunities, um, healthy fisheries, the whole gamut of what you would envision a national forest and how it's managed. And we, we're just finishing up a, a IRP, Integrated Resource Project for the Dorset, Peru area. I just, I signed a decision on it earlier this winter and the Dorset Peru IRP, um, essentially keeps, keeps us busy. It'll keep us busy for the next five to seven years with a whole suite of different projects. A lot of timber, timber treatment projects, harvesting, and that's been approved, ten, ten million acre feet, all said and told. Non-native invasive, invasive plants projects, so treating, treating weeds essentially, soil and water resource improvement projects, so that's, uh, you know, reclaiming, uh, old roads or reclaiming, uh, old skid roads that aren't, uh, in production anymore. Some recreation opportunities, so in the Dorset Peru project, we defined trail improvement projects, um, creating new trail heads, that kind of thing. Opportunities for transportation on the national forest, so that could be improving a road or improving a trail. What else? Opportunities to improve heritage resources, you know.
Are these, these trails and roads you're talking about, are some of these like in the ancient roads type mapping that was done a few years ago?
That'll be, yeah, yeah, that's going to be a big part of the South Route 9 project as we're just getting initiated into the South Route 9 project. I mean, you are the first select board we have met with on this project, so congratulations for being the first select board.
We'll let you know when you're done.
To, to answer your question though, Dorset and Peru, neither of those towns did the ancient roads, um, analysis, they decided to bypass that. So, we didn't really have, have that.
We ventured into it and unfortunately didn't make out well. But we did venture in very hard and didn't come up outstanding, but we did try.
So, after the Dorset Peru project, we were focusing now our efforts on the South Route 9 project for a few different reasons. One is, you know, the forest service, forest service hasn't really done a lot of management work down in the southern towns, uh, Powell, Stamford, Reed's Borough. So, we're excited to, you know, to make a presence and try to do some good projects. So, we're ta, we're on, we're doing the road show, you know, with the South Route 9 project and trying to, uh, introduce it and try to explain what it, what it's all about and the timeline and what we'll be looking for with you all, with the select boards. We'll be meeting with Stamford and Reed's Borough, uh, Towne Woodford, Bennington, during the month of, months of June and July. As well, we'll be meeting in July with the Bennington County Regional Planning Commission.
So, basically, you're going to take a walk in our woods?
Yeah.
And you're going to look over our neighborhood and are we going to get a report on this or are we going to, you're going to define the, the health of our forest here in Powell, both east, west, north and south and?
Yeah, the first, the first step of the IRP is to get an inventory of what's happening. You know, what's going, a baseline inventory of what's going on in the ground and, and, you know, we've had a lot of specialists, different resource specialists already, botanist and, and Jeff's crew doing stand exams on the forest out there, timber type, species type, uh, wildlife biologist, recreation specialist, already out there pounding the ground for the last year, actually. So, we're at the stage now where we want to start collaborating with, with the public and with the towns on what are some potential opportunities that we can do in this geographic project area, which is, it's quite large, 60,000 acres.
Yeah, maybe it would help if I, um, I've got a good sized map here that you can, uh, look at that. Microphone, shows the, um, project area, the purple line, um, indicates the boundary. It goes down into Massachusetts so that we can include an entire sub watershed because we, um, have a watershed condition, uh, framework. That's a, um, national initiative where we're supposed to be looking at entire watersheds and so we have to include an entire watershed. And, um, the HUSAC, um, north branch is the one that we chose, um, to include.
How does that work with, we have a forest management plan where we do our lumber. In fact, we're in the process of having that checked. How does this work? Do you work with that particular party that's, when you're checking forest areas out?
That's for the, um, for a town owned forest?
Yes.
Right.
Because we have like 800 acres over in the north section of town.
Um, yeah, so the, the, the project area for this, you know, to be clear, the Integrated Resource Project, that purple line defines the boundaries and then we're primarily looking at, um, at national forest lands within the project area boundary. And we're looking, you know, so the forest plan has a, has a desired condition, you know, it identifies what we want the forest to look like in different areas and this, the shading on the colors on the map are different management areas. It's kind of like zoning where you have a different desired condition and so what the, what we've been doing, uh, we've been doing in the field is getting an idea of what's there, what the existing condition is on the forest, what's the health of the forest, what's the condition and the use of trails and roads and what's the health and, and condition of the streams and the watersheds and the wetlands and how, how big are the problems with non-native invasive plants, soil and water erosion, all that, and then looking at how we, how that, what the existing condition differs from where the, the plan, the vision kind of shows it being. And then we're, then we're going to be proposing projects and activities to move it closer to what, um, you know, to more of the desired condition that, that's, uh, in the plan. And of course, you know, it's not one size fits all. I mean, we're, we're going to be looking at it, site specifically, locally, working with the communities, talking to, um, you know, the local communities and the, and the stakeholders, people that use the forest, um, the timber industry, the, the hiking groups, the, um, you know, anybody who has a stake in the forest, we're going to be trying to get some ideas about what they want to see there too and what their concerns and interests are and then while we're, while we're proposing those activities. So, we've, we've already kind of figured out this, we've already got a pretty good feel for the existing condition and the whole project area. And right now, we're in the, the phase where we're developing, starting to develop projects. But we're, at the same time, we're going to select boards, but we're also going to be, um, going to having public meetings where anybody's invited so that people, we can, you know, to kind of share what we've, what we've seen so far, what we're thinking about doing, get some feedback. But, so, we're primarily looking at forest service land, but, um, because that's where we have jurisdiction to do anything and funding to work. But the project area includes non-forest service land too and for a few reasons. One is because if we're going to consider, part of the, the IRP is to be compliant with the National Environmental Policy Act where we have to do a environmental analysis, determine environmental effects or whether there are environmental effects. And so, we want to look at a bigger area, um, when we're trying to figure out those environmental effects. You can't look at environmental effects in, you know, in one spot without looking at a bigger area. But we're also, we are interested in opportunities to collaborate with towns and private landowners and neighboring landowners and things to work that, where we have common interests and common goals, you know, whether it's, you know, work, you know, eradicating some non-native invasive plants that are, um, that, you know, it could be a problem with forest regeneration or, you know, or forest health issues or, or, uh, developing trail networks or, you know, those sort of things. So, so, you know, we're focusing, we're primarily funded and focused on national forest land, but we are, you know, we, we are interested in, in collaborating off forest and looking for opportunities too, particularly within the project area and particularly areas that are neighboring to the forest.
Yeah, I was going to say, they got a lap within each other.
Yeah, you got to be somewhat related, yeah.
We're also interested in the idea of complementary management. So, the forest is managed in a certain way, what type of management might an abutting property owner or nearby property owner do that would be complementary where, you know, yeah, provide diversity that, you know, would be best for, um, wildlife and people and, um, so.
Sounds interesting.
So, I have, um, some information that I can, um, hand out and I can go over this, um, a little bit just to, um, discuss and I actually brought, um, maps as well. And, um, also, we've recently done a, um, stream crossing assessment, which really sort of shows how we are not totally working on, um, forest service, forest service, uh, land. Some of the inventory work is done, um.
I can see and listen.
Is done off of the national forest and that also includes heritage. We've had our archaeologist and technician, um, examining the heritage resources, uh, same thing with, um, inventorying, um, for non-native invasive plants. And, um, so we're, we're, as Jeff said, we're in that. And so we're, we're, as Jeff said, we're in that inventory, sort of finishing up the inventory phase. And I have to say that our botanist has been very enchanted with the dome. And that seems to be a lot going on, yeah, in this, in this area. We're gonna be looking at the trails in the area. So then we're gonna move into the phase where we develop the possible activities and work with the public. And as Jeff said, we're, you know, talking about public meetings probably the end of August, it may actually be early September. We would be interested in having a meeting in Powell. I understand the elementary school is the place where...
Yeah, if there was something that, you know, you decide, contact us.
Yep.
And we can certainly arrange and see what happens and set that up.
Okay, great, great.
That is our largest meeting place.
Yes, yeah, and usually what we do is we have stations, we do a little presentation and then we have stations where people can get more in-depth information from, have our different resource specialists.
I ask a question here.
Certainly.
Since we do host an elementary school, would it be possible to integrate the school children somehow, some way in this educational process?
We would love, we would certainly love to have them come to the meetings and one of the things we do do is some field visits. So we can definitely talk about that, I think that's a great idea.
I like it, I like it, yeah, definitely.
I mean, you know, you'd have to approach the school on that, I'm just kinda putting that out there because they're tomorrow's generation, after we're in our rocking chairs that are gonna take care of the forest, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
If that's possible.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry Dale, I know you're the young one.
Well, it's good to bring them in if we can, after we've had the first meeting, that would be instrumental because young ideas and their involvement puts them a little more aware, so.
I mean, cause I'm, I'm sure that a lot of children don't even realize, when, when you said, you know, the botanist was extremely excited about what's going on up here at the dome, you piqued my interest right away, but because, you know, I wanna know what is going on up there.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of unusual plants, particularly unusual for this area. What it, a simple explanation is this is an area where ranges kind of converge. So you have more southern plants and more northern plants. So what you're seeing is plants that are very, that are unusual for this area because they're in the northernmost part of their range, plus there's just other, you know, interesting situations. It's got an oak component, which we don't have a lot of. There's a big huckleberry opening there. Those are just a few of the things that, and the couple times I've been out there and I still haven't been to the top, you know, we had a plant walk and people, there was like 15 people there, they were really interested, so. And I'm trying to build our mailing list for the events.
Great.
See, who didn't think we were special?
See?
Yeah, I hear a lot about Broadbrook, Dome, you know, it's been pretty special places down here.
Oh, that's great.
So then we'll, then we'll work on the possible activities and come up with a proposal for possible activities. And after that, we sort of kick over into this next phase, which is the National Environmental Policy Act analysis. We do, as I said, a scoping, we call it a scoping letter where we send out, you know, our proposed actions, we get input. But before we do that, we like to get a lot of input beforehand and so that we feel as though we're pretty much, you know, on the same page with the public and that the public understands where we're going and, you know, it's sort of the no surprises idea. So, um, let's see if there's anything else that I've missed related to that. One of the things that we have found with these projects is that they, it's, it's a more efficient and effective way to do our management. We get sort of everybody working in one area at the same time and we get more synergy and cross pollination amongst our specialists and different people come back and report about the same area and share ideas. So it, it just seems to work really well. And then when we're implementing, we can, you know, have folks who are doing timber help with, you know, the trails or, you know, we can have a trailhead that was created by having a log landing there. So it's just, it just seems like a really effective way to do these projects.
If I could add to that, you know, the Integrated Resource Approach, it's kinda, it's supposed to be kind of a holistic approach, looking at not just, not just, you know, timber folks going and looking for timber projects and, and wildlife, going and look for wildlife projects. We kinda all go to the same area and look at, look at how to integrate that stuff, you know, to do it more efficiently. But the Forest Service, and the Green Mountain in particular, has been using a congressional authority called the Stewardship Authority in recent years where we can use timber revenue to do restoration work. And so we do that in a couple ways. We can, we can use timber revenue that we collect to do, you know, regionally approved restoration work directly in the area, use that money, you know, turn that money around and use it, you know, without sending it back to the treasury and having money taken off for overhead and whatever else. We can use it directly on the ground locally in the same areas. But we can also do goods for services contracts. So instead of doing a standard timber sale where we sell the timber to the highest bidder and then collect the revenue and send a lot of it to the treasury and put it in different trust funds and things, we, we can, we have service work that's part of that bundled into that contract. So the, they bid on the timber, but they also bid on getting, doing some service work. It might be, you know, fixing erosion control problems or, you know, wild, like habitat enhance, you know, wildlife habitat enhancement projects or, there's any number of things that it could be. And then, and so then that, part of that revenue then goes to the contract, or to the timber purchaser or their subcontractor, so that money stays, stays local. But the whole idea is that, that we're, we're not looking just at extracting the timber, but we're trying to, trying to, you know, get more, more holistic work, restoration work. And the whole process is more collaborative, we work more with towns and communities and people. And we, we're looking, we look for opportunities to get into partnerships or agreements with, you know, trail clubs or conservation groups and stuff when we're putting together those types of contracts, or looking for opportunities to use those funds, you know, examples. We, we did some work with the Town of Peru and the Nordic Project where they, they, they actually entered into a contract with us for a timber sale and they had a local logger do it. And then they had the local fire department do some of the fire line, fire break work where we had some prescribed fire and they had a local construction company do a, a pullout for a recreation area to address a soil and water concern. And we've done work with trail clubs where we'll do like a cost share agreement where we'll put money to the trail club and then they'll, they'll match with some labor and some work to, you know, move a trail that has an erosion problem to relocate and rehabilitate the old trail and, you know, things along those lines. And so we're looking for those types of opportunities.
Yeah, these are hiking trails.
Snowmobile trails, hiking trails, but you know, cross-country ski trails, you know, there's all sorts.
So, yeah, we're, you know, glad for the opportunity to notify you and, and share this project with you and...
Absolutely.
You'll be seeing more of us over the next few months, you know, as this project gets rolling.
Has anybody in your group been in touch with Williams College and Hopkins Forest and that whole project? Cause they keep such incredible data on the forest going over there, which just borders on Powell.
Yeah, yeah, if you wanna address that, I know.
I, I don't know about the Hopkins Forest part, but we have, our ecologist has talked to Williams College, I can't, Art?
Yeah, Hank Art.
Hank Art, yes. She's, she's spoken with them, so.
Well, he probably directs you over there, then, and it just borders on Powell and it's an ama, I don't know how many acres it is, but they keep vital statistics for many years, rainfall, everything.
That's Hopkins Forest?
Hopkins Forest.
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred acres.
How many?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred acres.
Twenty-five hundred acres.
Yeah.
Of ongoing research and progress.
And did you say you've been in touch with the Williams College Trail Club as well?
The outing club?
The outing club, yes. And we will be, I haven't talked to them personally, but I know Jennifer, I think, works with them and we will be talking to them because they're the ones who take care of the trail system that's on the dome and Broadbrook and in some other areas in Powell as well. So I think it'd be really important to get them on board planning. The other thing, we're gonna talk a little bit about the stream crossing assessment?
Um, yeah, it's not my, it's not my area expertise, but I know that, uh, there's been a lot of, the Forest Service has done, you know, the, the Fisheries and Watershed Group on the forest has done a lot of work in recent years and gotten a lot of support for doing some aquatic organism passage, which in most cases is, you know, building bigger, more sustainable culverts and struck, stream crossings and road structures, you know. And so they got a lot of attention after Irene because a lot of those, those structures survived the storm and the floods, even where there was a lot of damage in the same area where they're, they're, so they're trying to make the crossings and the streams more flood resilient, which benefits, benefits the infrastructure, but also the stream and the hydrology, cause you get less sedimentation when there's storms and things blow out and wash out. But also they're looking to maintain habitat connectivity and, you know, stop barriers to fish moving back and forth and other aquatic organisms that can be, you know, really compromise genetics and pop, you know, the, the health of those, you know, the fish populations and things and, and can degrade the quality of the habitat there. So they've, and they've, they've been, there's been a lot of funding available, you know, federal funding and then other, their grants and partnerships and other groups have, they've been able to, to get funding to do this kind of work and they've, they've been even looking at doing it, you know, working with towns to, you know, in some of the high, you know, some, some high priority projects on town, town roads and, you know, where towns are interested in trying to bring some of this funding and expertise and make some improvements and flood resiliency and aquatic organism passage. So, I mean, that's, you know, they'll, they'll be, they'll be representatives at the meet, you know, if we do public meetings, if you wanna know more about it.
So if you look at the back of that, with the columns, there's a map that shows the work that they have done and you'll be able to see the categories for the culverts that they've looked at in Powell already. So that's just, you know, some, something to think about that there are some possibilities to improve culvert conditions, flood resiliency and aquatic organism passage, you know, working with partners, stuff.
The telling thing here is they got 200, they surveyed 266 crossings in the, in the project area and I think 30% didn't allow passage of any aquatic organisms at all. So those were fragmented habitats, you know, basically barriers, they were like all isolated little systems, you know, habitat systems, so. So, you know, that's, that's one of the things though, you know, in addition to the flood resiliency, that they'll be looking for opportunities to fix, so. And then we'll, we'll be doing timber management. We've got, you know, like in Dorset Peru, I think we were managing 2,000 acres. We're planning to harvest, do some kind of timber harvest on about 2,000 acres, which is about 10 million board feet over the next, you know, five to 10 years. We've already done, well, we're in the process getting Forest inventory data on around 6,000 acres in the South Route Nine project area and, you know, we're not gonna treat that, we're not gonna do management on that many acres, but we're, you know, we're shooting, we'd like to manage, you know, considerably more than, than 2,000. I think we've got potential to manage three or 4,000 acres in, in the area for, for hard, you know, for producing high-quality hardwood and, but also for wildlife habitat projects and just increasing the habitat diversity and, and forest health.
Well, let us know what you find and please, you know, get on the agenda again when you're ready and let Linda know.
Just wanna point out that on the back of this South of Route Nine sheet is contact information, my contact information.
Great.
And Bill's contact information, so don't throw that one out.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
So much for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Your meeting's interesting, too.
A lot of it sounds familiar.
They're gonna get better if I accompany you.
We're actually on very good behavior tonight.
It was great to meet you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Good night, Natalie.
Good night.
Hey, take care.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, oh, excellent.
Don't take a shot, Julie.
I have an appointment, I'm good.
Did you want a map, too?
I think I'm like, nah, maybe I'll go.
Okay.
Shoot, I gave him some glass.
What am I here?
You know?
I gave them all away.
We need a copy, Keith?
We're mad now.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Back up to the bridge, right?
Well, you wanna do that or do you wanna do this budget adjustments? Which is right underneath Green Mountain.
Yeah, why don't we do that and then you can go back.
Okay, switching to budget adjustments next. Okay, we have budget adjustments where we have overspent. Uh, if we approve this budget so we can get this done. Well, I'll run down through here, radio purchase, overspent $900.
It's not necessary to go through all of it.
No, just go to the bottom.
The treasurer is simply asking to move the over expenditures to take that from the 50,000 contingency. Mind yourself your expenditures and you'll still have a balance of 27,000. Go to like page, must be like page three or two or something.
Yeah, I'm on the wrong page because I'm seeing 50, 10 and 40.
Yeah, that's a separate.
The general.
This one?
First one is the general, okay?
Okay. Okay. Yep. So the expenditures will be 22, 78509.
Right.
Okay. Now that leaves us with a balance of 27, 21420.
Oh, question, no.
How much more?
Well, I know we spent a lot of money on legal, but almost $20,000 over budget.
We were 15 here two months ago.
And the building fund, $7,000. 69, 11, 61.
Where are you, in the road?
Nope, the general. Third page. It says building fund.
7, 69, 100 bucks.
Building, I mean.
I think what she's asking, I'm reading on the last page, to please approve the budget adjustments as presented. These have to be done regardless.
Yeah, we overspent, I'm just, he was trying to figure out where and I can't right off the top of my head, but we've already spent it, so we have to approve it to cover this and take it out of the...
Yeah, if you need further research, we'll have to get that for you, Mike.
I don't know, it's not my scene, minimal, but motion to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion. You have a second, all in favor? You have a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, and the next one, we have, out of contingency, $10,000 taken out, leaving us a $40,000 balance to adjust our expenditures in the budget. Please approve the budget.
Two adjustments.
Okay, which is $10,000.
Motion to award the money.
Got a motion?
Yeah, second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
I'm gonna try to get my signatures on the minutes here, I just need this, so I'm gonna pass these around.
Okay, all right, before we go into personnel, let's go into the bridge blacktop bids. Okay, we have two contracts on Burlington Road and Center Street. One is for Del Signor at 19, 675 Center Street, and $10,379 on Burlington Road. WW contracting Burlington Road at 12,000, and Center Street at 18,000. And if my math is right, that comes out pretty much close to the same.
We gotta table this until.
Blacktop, we won. Only blacktop, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the blacktop, until we get.
Yeah, the Center Street.
Proper paperwork.
The Center Street ones.
We're supposed to call them, I guess, seeing as though they were the only two.
With, um...
I don't think we're breaking any rules.
No, we were supposed to, that's what the, you, you motioned from your previous meeting.
Yeah.
Was to get the information, then.
Right.
Move on it.
Yeah, for the blacktop, so there's no decision on the top.
All right, all right, so we're gonna table this, table this one until both are contacted with the rest of the paperwork needed, and this is who the only two bids. Okay, bridge. I believe, this is the membrane, and we have two on that, which is A.D. Rossi, and I believe the total was 17, 215, and $135 a lineal foot. Daniels at 55,000, in excess of 240 square feet, it would be $50.
You're not talking membrane and that one.
Daniels was 20 grand.
For the membrane.
For the membrane.
55,000 was repaired.
We separated it out for.
Yep, yep, I'm, I'm, yep.
We fought that around.
Right, yep, yep.
Wasn't too good.
Right, yep, there's only one on that, then. Yeah, I'm going, 'cause Daniels had another one on there, okay.
Makes a motion award the membrane to A.D. Rossi.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second for A.D. Rossi at 17, 215, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Now the work.
Work.
Daniels.
What is Daniels at? 55,000, and excess of 240 square feet, $50.
Motion award the bid to Daniels.
We have a motion on Daniels, we have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Yeah, if I'm mistaken, now we're doing the entrance and.
The approach, right?
Approaches, exit, and east and west side. We have west side of bridge from Bizon, 65, 90, east side of bridge, 65, 90. Jeff Miller, both sides of the bridge included. We should total this other one up, shouldn't we?
I think it was 13.
17, 80. All right, so Bizon was 17, 80 total, Jeff Miller, both sides of the bridge, 11, 271 total. Scott Lee Morrison, east, 4,500, west, 4,100, for a total of 8,600. Catrel, west, 34, 09, east, 8,090, for a total of 11, 499. Those are bids on that one, I believe, yes.
Motion to award it to Morrison.
Second it.
Okay, Morrison, there's a motion and second it, all in favor?
All right, hi.
Hi. Trying to read through the, by air, but I think that's all we're doing.
That's all we're doing for today.
Blacktopping, we can't do anything else on that, and as soon as we hear on the, the blacktopping award information, we will get back on this, which should be the second, oh boy, second week of July. Actually.
Yes, sir.
We have to call, call up special meeting just to do those bids awards.
Yeah, because we're gonna run into that.
It's a matter of, of getting that information, which I think they can gather pretty quickly. Why don't we just pick out something like right now?
I was gonna say, why don't we take a motion on the bidder concluding that the paperwork comes in correctly? That we're, we're missing paperwork on both these last two bidders, with both bidders replying, we need to make a motion on who we would take at this point, and subject to that changing would be the paperwork.
No, we don't, not at this point.
I don't think we can do that.
You want to request the requested information?
Right.
Schedule a special meeting next week as soon as possible. I'm sure these individuals just need tomorrow to give me what we're looking for. Pick out a date next week that we can all meet to award this bid.
They'd have to do spax, I'm right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we need to pick out a meeting next week.
Probably should be before then, shouldn't it, or?
But you're having your sewer board meeting.
Yeah, we have sewer board meeting, so.
You could do it, you could do it before your sewer board meeting if you wanted to.
We're closing up shop next week, so.
How many people am I gonna have available?
I should be.
Next Thursday, I won't bump you here.
Yeah.
We have Tuesday night?
I'm asking, we can.
Tuesday night would work.
Tuesday night would work for me.
As I know.
I'm not gonna be here either way, so, so you guys decide.
Tuesday, okay with you?
That's fine.
Can we do it like as soon as possible?
Yeah, quicker we do it, the better.
Six o'clock?
Is that the earliest? Can you get here six?
I'll do my darndest.
We'll wait for you as long as.
All right, so we'll consider Tuesday night, six o'clock.
6:00 AM Tuesday.
And that's what date the.
Oh, what is it?
On Tuesday, we'll work with it.
25th.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. That'll be for the blacktop bid award.
There are two on there.
Hey, Rich, can you pass that name, please?
There are two on there.
6:25, sorry, Mike, there's two, there's one. At 6:00 PM.
Yep.
I get the rest of it.
Okay, with that, before we go into personnel, while you guys are all fresh and signing, I didn't bring this up, and I didn't wanna do it on the air, but it's okay. Flowers have been planted in all the cemeteries, the seniors, I asked them if they'd be interested, and the group went out and did this for us. I wanted to send them a little thank you card, maybe a little something to go with it later, but I wanted to get the board to sign a card with a thank you feeling.
We don't need a motion to do that, so.
Well, I need to talk to y'all at once. Okay, while you guys are signing, we need to go into personnel, hair raises.
Make more, we gotta go into executive?
I believe we should.
Motion to go into executive session?
You've killed me.
Second it.
All personnel.
Yes.
Nobody else is doing anything, 'cause I didn't really know.
I second it.
I would assume there would be, but don't take anything ice-egg serious.
I think it's gonna be short and sweet.
So with that, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
We already did that.
Okay, all in favor, Ari, I was somewhere else.
You're getting the card in.
Thank you, we're closed.
Yep, we keep the cards.
All right.
Get those cards and letters coming.
That's it.